Call our meeting to order. Agenda review and disposition, anything to add to tonight's agenda?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Minutes of May 1st, 2017, I'll entertain a motion to accept this statement.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Principal's report.
We are thrilled to have our student council here to review our year, very great year. We have Sophie Murray, Maya Burbish, Suma Billen, Leah Brunt, and I think Hunter McLeod keeps us grounded back there, so they would just like to share about their year, their advisor. Nancy Stock is here as well. You guys. You know, they do all, you guys present in front of 400 students and...
I didn't think we were that scary.
We're just old students.
Yes, very old students, some of us.
Yeah, so, in the beginning of the year, the student council participated in a leadership activity at Southern New Hampshire University. So, we left early in the morning, and when we got there, we got a little tour of the campus, and then we went inside and we were all split up into different groups. So, we were all forced to make friends. Once we were in our different groups, we had, did we have a student from the university with us? And they led us in different activities, like, we built paper towers in little groups, and then we talked about important qualities for people to have and important qualities for leaders to have. And later on in the day, we talked about goals for like the distant and near future that we want. And then, at the end of the day, we got all together and we did one big thing where you like held hands and rolled on the wall. I know, it was fun. And we had a slideshow about what we did during the day.
This was the first year that Plymouth Elementary School attended, and it was great about it, we could do it again.
I'm gonna talk about the winter formal. We had one of our regular dances, and we decided to make it a little more formal. We dressed up, we had a photo booth, put up decorations, and had cookies. Everyone had a lot of fun, and we ended up donating all the money we made to the Humane Society.
I would talk about the community service day that we do every year. This year, we had 13 choices for students in the middle school. It's a great day, it's one of my favorites. And we made six new connections with the community, and my favorite was that we reached out to the Plymouth Senior Center, and we participated in their home-delivered meals program and made something to send home. So, it was a really good day.
In fall, we had a rent-robin week, and that week was to help prevent drugs and alcohol usage. And there was a certain thing to do each week, and the student council members would give you raffle tickets if you completed that challenge. And there was a pep rally at the end, and if your name got pulled from the raffle ticket, you would get a little prize that we gave you. And we had some games to make it a little more peppy this time. The games are a freeze tag, hula-hooping, and we did a basketball shootout against myself, so, the game would get taken and someone would shoot against me.
And who won?
Me. It was amazing, actually. It was really amazing.
The ringer, huh?
Yeah. It was a great week for the whole middle school. Everyone participated, and we really tried to stay healthy and stay away from our bad decisions, and we kicked it off at the end with some great spirit, so it was great.
I'm gonna talk about, a little bit about the donations that we did throughout the year. Sophie touched upon it a little bit. We ended up donating roughly $75 to the Humane Society from the snowball. Our biggest donation this year was the donation to the First Art Tonight, where we donated $1,000 to the First Art Tonight, from money that we accumulated from our second star dance that we had video. And we made another donation to March for Dimes, which is something that Mrs....
Mrs. Kindles was leading up, yeah.
That we also collected money from dances for.
So, the student council decided to participate in some new events this year. One of them was the Holiday Bazaar, which was a craft fair at the Plymouth United Methodist Church, and we sold crafts that the student council made. And the other, which was my favorite, was the pie-in-the-face fundraiser. Students bought raffle tickets to get the chance to pie one of us in the face at the Earth Day Assembly. And we made like $80 or so on that one.
That's actually really cool, because you were named, weren't you, a disaster? There was some sort of pollution, so the kids, when they hit the pie in the face, were kind of stamped out, like water pollution. They were really, well, did you guys write all of those water pollution and air pollution? It was really, really, love it. And I do have to just say that that was one of the best pep rallies we've ever had. At the beginning of the year, it was really well organized and really fun.
Maybe we can come back and... That's us, right here.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
They're very creative and committed, so. On May 4th and 5th, we hosted 27 families for our annual kindergarten connections. We had four stations set up for families to visit and connect with staff members. Stations include a community station, academics, wellness, and a speech OT screening. At each station, there's one PES staff who works with students. So, for example, Mrs. Morris will work with the student, and then I'll talk with the parents and give some resources and answer any questions. We're all at one table, so that's low stress, it is informal screening, we get a lot of really great information about the students, and I think we make a really good start for incoming kindergartens. This is the ninth year that we've done kindergarten connection, and it's just a positive tone while we get to know each other. Parents receive a letter in June with teacher assignments and information about open house and the first week of school. Kindergarten is an important transition, and kindergarten connections has proven to be a great first step, no tiers. We are super excited, especially about this incoming, this incoming group of kindergartners. Last month, our PACE team was here and presented on our work on quality performance assessments. On May 22nd, we hosted 18 teachers and administrators from Deerfield, Haberle, Cooperative Middle School, Hampton, Piermont Village, Newport, Bath, to share and showcase the structures and processes we have in place for PACE. From 2:00 to 4:00 PM in the afternoon, teachers shared specifically, specific projects. Teachers got to observe our sixth grade students working on their Spark projects, as well as our validation team modeled that process, quality performance, what we call it like a fishbowl, so people kind of looked and watched them take a real project and run it through the process. The Center for Collaborative Education helped to facilitate the conversation, and thank you to our validation team, who was here last month, Allison Estes-Brown, Jen Dale, Sarah Carlson, Nancy Stock, and Lori Cleary, and to the teachers who shared their work, Alyssa Sados, Patty O'Neil, Andy McDonald, Michelle LaPrilliano, and Sarah Sanborn. We were really flooded with thank you notes and reflection on the professional, like one of the best professional development days for the teachers who visited, so it was great. On May 23rd, Lynn Lyons, an expert counselor on anxiety, gave a presentation to SAU 48 staff, as well as families. It was phenomenal and addressed many of the issues we see on a day-to-day basis. Ms. Lyons has developed and uses concrete techniques that help students and families overcome anxiety, handle pressure situations, manage challenges of daily life. She talked about lengthening the leash and emphasized the growth mindset, helping so that students and families do not get stuck in anxiety. She noted that worry is normal and that we need to help students deal with uncertainty. She co-authored on anxious kids, anxious parents, and playing with anxiety, and I just think it's great that SAU 48 provides these opportunities. It was a great, I'm not sure how many people went to the parent night, I hope, I hope it was passed.
That was good craft.
It was great for the staff, for sure. We are wrapping up the details for our summer school programs. We have two. Extended school year is the special education summer program provided for identified students who will not, will lose progression significantly without services. In order for a student to receive ESY, the student must have evidence substantial regression in the prior year. Presently, we have 37 students enrolled in ESY. Plymouth Elementary School also offers a summer learning program paid for by Title I funds. Students receive an hour of intensive, individualized, or small group tutoring in reading and math. We work to front-load curriculum in Title I for students so that they're, when they transition to the new school year, they're ready, they've experienced some of the curriculum already. For example, students entering the middle school grades in that time period will have read all of their summer reading with a coach, so, and that's worked out really, really well. Hunter McLeod, recited in Flanders Field by John McCray, Suma Billen, read the history of how and why Memorial Day came to be in existence, and Lauren Cicerino performed a flawless rendition of taps. Our winner of the Parks and Rec Talent Show, Remington, sang the National Anthem, and as always, each student received an American flag. You probably saw it as you walked in, every student receives an American-flagged plant within class in certain locations around Plymouth Elementary School. Thank you to Mr. Stevens and Mrs. Hand for keeping this wonderful PES tradition going. On May 26th, Katie held its 17th Annual Regional Summit that recognizes community accomplishments in preventing and reducing youth alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use, and New Hampshire clearly is leading the way on taking on addiction. Keynote speakers, Dr. Kevin Sabat and Dr. Stephen Casals were very enlightening, reviewing not only personal and health impacts, but also the heavy economic and community impacts. We heard from several dignitaries, Senators Gene Shaheen, Maggie Hassan was there, and Congresswoman Ann McLean-Custer. Governor Chris Sununu spoke privately, and kind of resonated with me, actually, because he talked about really listening to kids and really talked about our middle school-age students. I actually came back to school and really tried to find out more about what we're doing in our middle school to be more specific about the specific drugs out there. Lo and behold, health teacher Deb McManus is doing a phenomenal job with an extensive, comprehensive, updated program. And we are in, we are talking with Katie, they have a new outreach program that goes into schools and works directly with students in the K-8 program, so we're really looking forward to collaborating with them next year. This past week, I met with grade-level teams and specialists. We had what we call mini-retreats, and just to share, we kind of start planning for next year, even though we're in the throes of the end of this year. So, with snow days and other events like winter program, we are gonna give a shot with the six, what we call a six-day schedule, and so basically what that looks like, is today's Monday would be day one, Tuesday day two, Friday day five, Monday would be day six, Tuesday would be day one, and so it would rotate around throughout the year. This does a lot for our schedule. If we have a snow day or a winter program day on day three, we would actually have day three the next day, so we don't miss any curriculum, specialists, you know, aren't hit with the same timeframe. It also helps to streamline some of our specials and make it a more streamlined schedule all around, so we're excited about that. That's, and we walk through that grade by grade, and we're able to have some conversations about how to implement that. We've also developed an integration innovation team that includes Carol LaMaser, our technology coordinator, Beth Wilkie, our media library specialist, Jeff Lines, our computer teacher, and Julie Pianas, our STEM teacher, and myself. We've already been meeting weekly for the last two months and planning out the logistics for having them work with students in more of an enrichment model. For example, during our response to intervention blocks, some students may be taking a lesson or an idea beyond what is done in a classroom. They may be working with Mrs. Pianas on a project and just generating, we're doing a lot of that already, but in a project-based learning model, so. A lot of the work will happen during science and social studies as well, and the main purpose, or one of the main purposes, is to tap those students who need a good academic challenge. Great night, the other night, the kindergarten through grade four academic fair and STEM showcase were really a true celebration, a rigorous, engaging work, and many classes students presented examples of work such as their state projects and their planet pop-up books, and how most of the writing was about writing to an authentic audience. We also had a great turnout for the spaghetti supper, which was served beforehand and served as a fundraiser for the eighth-grade trip. And just wanted to congratulate our talented musicians and singers and dancers for an outstanding Concert Thursday, from the opening number, from the beginning band, really amazing beginning band opener, to a really fun Michael Jackson medley and a crowd-pleasing rock band that included Mr. Stevens on bass, which is great. We really are fortunate to have great instruction and enthusiasm for music and from our band director, Mr. Stevens. I have a whole slew of field trips coming up, but I'm just gonna focus on a couple of things. June 7th, this Wednesday, is the grade 5 through 8 STEM showcase and academic fair. Would love to have people come and see, you know, where your students are going, it's really another amazing night. This Saturday, there's a road race called Miles for Smiles, it's a fundraiser, but the reason why it's special to Plymouth Elementary School is it's a culminating event for our runners who are in the grades 2 through 4 after-school running club. We have about 21 students, and I just wanted to do a quick shout-out to the coaches, they're out there every Monday and Wednesday, running with second, third, and fourth graders, Chris Valenti kind of spearheads it, Michelle LaPrilliano, Young Choi, Angie Bolio, Holly Burlone, and I think Mr. Sa, I think you're out there every once in a while. June 16th is our move-up day, our last day of school, and our eighth-grade graduation, so those are the key. Want to know the other field trips, they're here. Great, and thank you for your support on those, they really generate a lot of good energy, so we really appreciate it. We don't, not, a lot of schools have that, so thank you.
Okay, so our last report on athletics, we have the middle school state championship meet back on May 18th, and that was at Wynn Squam. We actually had 16 of our students qualify to attend that meet, which is great. Top finishers of the day, Julia Ahern took a first place in the high jump, second in the shot, and second in the discus, and Sean Griffiths placed first in the shot put as well. Other team members that placed in that meet, they were taking places 1 through 6. Fourth place was Damian Costigan in the discus, Connor Smith in the javelin. We had some fifth-place finishers, Suma Billen in the hurdles, Karina Flynn in the mile, Gwen Merrifield in the 200, and Jayden Zico in the 200, and Orion Brown rounded it out with a sixth place in the 200. Our other qualifiers that gave a great effort included Livia Marinowski, Hunter McLeod, Olivia Goffier, Anna Woodward, Raquel McCoy, and Owen Kahoon. And actually, today, Julia Ahern is competing down at, they have a middle school meet of champions, so she is down at Milford High School this afternoon and competing in all three of her events, the high jump, shot, and the discus, so hopefully Julia did well, I'm sure she did. But congratulations to the entire team, and thanks to the coaches, John Ramsey and Nancy Stock. Baseball and softball teams opened back on May 9th, and then they continued to dodge raindrops in an effort to try to get as many games in as they could. The softball team ended up finishing 4-1, while the baseball team was 2-3. Both of the teams were very youthful, and, you know, talking with the coaches, they were very pleased with the amount of improvement that they did see from these young athletes over the course of the season, through the practices and the games, and they did have kind of a rough spring season with the amount of rain that they had, some of the changes that they had for the games and practices, so we appreciate all the efforts of coaches, Stefan Burdette and Macaulay O'Malley from softball, Will Abbott and Curtis Arsenault from baseball. And then moving on, in preparation for fall sports, physicals were offered actually today at school in Mrs. Varren's office, and Mr. Underwood tells me that the fall team schedules for practices and events will be posted on the school website by the end of this week. Also on there are several athletic camp opportunities as well that families can access and take a look at. On Friday, May 26th, the middle school band and chorus students traveled to Nashua North High School to compete in the Great East Music Festival. Led by Jacob Stevens, the band performed Abington Ridge and music from the Pirates of the Caribbean. Then the chorus followed them and sang Homeward Bound and Fields of Gold. And after careful review and praise to the students and Mr. Stevens, both the band and the chorus received gold honors for their performances, and they did a great job, they really did. Once the performance part of the day ended, they all got to breathe, students loaded onto the bus and handed, headed for Kirby Lake Park to enjoy their afternoon and celebrate their hard work. And as always, I think this is my fourth year attending that event, our kids are attentive, they're courteous, they're right on point, and they're responsible all day long, including at the park. They just do a great job, and we get a lot of compliments when we're there. Many thanks to Mr. Stevens for preparing the students and his efforts to organize the event, and also thanks to chaperones, Mr. Greenler, Mr. McGloin, and Mrs. Hand, and I know we all loaded up a bunch of band equipment into our vehicles to make sure that they all got down there. And lastly, in terms of the safety committee, we're scheduled to hold the last meeting this year, this Wednesday on June 5th, but due to the busy end-of-year events and schedules, we've decided to postpone the meeting, and I will be meeting with Chief LeFave and Chief Clogston at a later date. And a lot of our discussion coming up in for over the summer includes, we did have a recent request by Mid-State Montessori School to use Plymouth Elementary as their off-site evacuation facility if ever needed, and so we'll be talking about that. We always review our emergency management plan, do any possible updates and recommendations there. We'll need to replace a few key members that are losing to retirement and moving on, and we're also going to review our FEMA training, which is a whole training course, there's a number of them, but I've already put out that information to the committee, and our hopes is that everyone on the committee will have that training and go through that this summer and have their certificates of participation, and it's just a good, it's basically the introduction to incident command is what we're looking at, one that's developed around schools. So, that's it. But many thanks also to our committee members and obviously to our police and fire departments for all their service over the past year, and it's always an incredibly supportive group as well.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Julia?
No.
Thank you very much. Privilege of the floor, number one. Anybody here to speak this evening? There's always one in the back.
It's the only guy staring at me, so please don't say anything, I feel bad. So, I just wanted to follow up, there's some questions I asked about at the last school board meeting regarding the RTI, and I just wanted clarification in terms of the enrichment aspect. Right now, the way, in third grade, the way the RTI is running is that they have the students that are above the, above their grade level, and certain subjects pinch off, if you will, to enrich them, provide them a little more rigor in terms of content, and I'm just wondering if you could clarify if that aspect of the RTI is gonna continue, if it's gonna be provided for all the grades, if you guys can comment on that.
Happy to, yes. Primarily, we try to meet all students' needs through the differentiation in the classroom and having some small class sizes and small groups. That being said, that Integration Innovation Team worked the schedule this year, I know we wanted to do it this year, but for next year, really tapping into the talents of our teachers like Julie Pianas and Jeff Lines and Beth Wilkie, to work with teachers on doing some more direct enrichment. Right now, I would love to say yes, we're gonna look at the staffing, and as we get the student data at the very beginning of the year, we'll look and see, you know, how that all shakes out, how, you know, which students are, you know, beyond grade level and definitely work to meet their needs.
So, budgetary concerns are finishing in that regard?
We're working on it. I think we'll look at the schedule, and I'm not seeing any direct budgetary needs.
I just like the project-based approaches that we're taking this past year, and I sincerely hope that that approach continues, simply because the way that society is going, it's not just, it's no longer just textbooks, it's actually application of what they're learning. And I appreciate this integration, or was that, integration?
Integration Innovation Team, we're really trying to stay away from another acronym.
I appreciate you putting that together, and as I've offered in a previous meeting, I don't think it was a school board meeting, but if, you know, I hope that the school, I don't know if I should say school board, but I hope at least the school can reach out to the community and tap into the resources that are available. I guess not hope because it's being reported, but I do offer my services in my field.
And I'll pay.
Just with smiles on the kids, that's all I care about, so I do offer my services in that regard.
Take you up on that, for sure.
I would like to add to that, that this past year, having Amy Bailey working with the fifth grade has been phenomenal, and I know that my child is trying to rearrange his music lesson schedule so that he could make it to that with Mrs. Bailey, and so I think bringing those experts from the community is really a great way to reach out to those kids, because it doesn't tap into whatever, you've got so much going on here, and the teachers are really busy and overwhelmed here, that to pull some kids to do that sort of activity is really worthwhile. And could you explain a little bit better about that team, that I didn't really understand what?
Yeah, it's, and it is based around project-based learning, so in the schedule, most schedules have a block of specifically dedicated to project-based learning, and so the team would be, is scheduled to have access during one of the six days, or more, more than that, so they'll be in the classroom, working with the teachers. Already, some of the projects have, they wanted to take it to another level, and by providing time in the schedule, just, you know, that was one of my goals this year for the schedule, was to be able to have this team working directly with students to do more of an enrichment model, so this year, we couldn't quite get the access, and I think too, that team is gonna meet every week to review what projects are going on in school, and what the projects need, what sorts of staffing they might need as well, or what sort, what community members could come in.
And is that K-3?
It's K-3.
Thank you.
Just to follow up, when do you see that, around that enrichment being in place, like right at the fall, the end of the month?
Yeah, for the first couple of weeks of school, we do have a lot of big events going on for the middle school especially. We also do a lot of assessment at the very beginning of the year and activities of, you know... We also do a lot of um assessment at the very beginning of the year and activities of, you know, getting to know each other. This year especially, we're going to talk about how we, how we behave in the building as well. So probably, probably September, we'd start shaking that out for sure.
Any more public comment? Well, thank you. Consent items, claims and payroll, and you'll have signed correspondence.
In your packet, you received a copy of a letter that was sent to the chairman from uh the PEA.
Any discussion? You take that under advisement, the budget cycle we have and staffing needs. Discussion items, nomination, support staff, summer school, preschool co-curricular?
Yes, we have uh our slate of support staff for next year um in non-public session. Come out and I'll do the nominations. Also, our slate of the Title I summer school teachers for the program Julie talked about. And um, uh, we've uh come up with a preschool um slate of, of folks um also. And there's a co-curricular nomination, so uh after non-public, I'll be making those nominations.
The resignation?
Yes, there's a couple of uh support staff resignations.
And staffing for fiscal year eighteen?
Right, um, and Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, I, uh, currently we're at um three sections of each grade.
Correct.
And-
Except for kindergarten.
Except for kindergarten, where there are two. And then the other planned position that's on hold is a point-six music position, which is on hold based on what the kindergarten numbers look like. So that's where we are at this very moment, so I don't know, Julie, if you have an update on the kindergarten numbers or?
Yes, we're at three zero, we're at thirty.
At thirty now?
Yeah.
Better for this time of the year, most numbers that we get.
As we learned this year, they can be volatile, uh, obviously, so. It's magic ball time, I guess, you know, um, but that's where we are.
Fiscal year seventeen, financial update?
Yes, um, let me, let me just go through the revenues for you, which is this single sheet that's combined. As you know, we don't hit our revenue targets, we have to cut spending um in order to balance the budget because the tax rate for the tax bills everyone received last November was based on us not overspending this budget and hitting our revenues on this budget. So we've, uh, we're doing okay. Um, there, there are only two uh brief areas that haven't hit their target at the moment. Um, Medicaid reimbursement, uh, we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand that we hope to get. As of the moment, we have seventy-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars in-house. Um, that's a late arrival. Uh, oftentimes, we'll deal with the company that uh gets the Medicaid money for us. So we'll either have more cash coming, we really do close the books in, in late July, early August. So all those checks that will come in between now and then are credited to this fiscal year. And also, we'll get a, we'll get a handle on what's in the pipeline so we can use that as a receivable uh when we close the books. So I'm, I'm not, um, we're within striking distance of that number, so at the moment, it, that doesn't concern me. And also down below, you will see um revenues for um preschool. And we are projecting fifty-seven thousand, we're at thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven. We get some support there from uh federal programs. So I'm not concerned at the moment about, about that number either. We're a little, a little more than twenty thousand off on that number. But again, at this time of year, uh, federal and state money can be slow arriving, so I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that number. Title I reimbursement, uh, I'm also, I'm also fine with, so all in all, um, our revenues and credits are at ninety-eight percent. Uh, so we're in the, we're talking about the two percent area, so I, I think we're, I'm comfortable with the revenues. On the appropriation side, if you go to the back, the bottom line, you can see at the moment, um, we have nine thousand, three hundred, ninety-three dollars and six cents available. We have final payrolls and a lot of other things already encumbered so that, uh, we don't have to meet those bills. But this is what is available at the moment. We'll close some purchase orders and we'll get some surprises, but uh, we, we will break even on the appropriation side. But as you all knew during the year, this would be a close call, so that's where we are. For new board members, we've had negative numbers at this time of year, right there too, so this isn't, this isn't bad. But you always like a roller coaster ride with the Plymouth budget because of the unique programs that we have and transitional housing that we have in the community we're constantly in. It's not, there are easier districts to keep track of than Plymouth, so. But it's a good report for where we are at the moment.
Any questions on numbers for Mark? Summer meeting date?
Yes, um, these, these are uh not arbitrary, they're uh, but I will, we can move them if there are issues. We generally take July off, we have a summer meeting. Uh, usually it's, it's sometime in August. August seventh just happens to be the first Monday. If people are not available, we certainly can move that, uh, because August has floated all over the place at, at different times. But the other uh meeting, September eleventh is the second Monday. Uh, we, and that's when we meet in September because uh obviously Labor Day is the first Monday. October second, November sixth, and December fourth are all the first Mondays of the month. So we're open, um, and I've talked to nobody, I just threw out the seventh and said, all right, we'll, we'll discuss it at uh, we'll discuss it at uh the board meeting, so we just need to come up with a summer date.
I won't be here on the seventh.
Okay.
You'll be up in two weeks?
Um, I'll be back on the fourteenth.
Fourteenth? How's the fourteenth for folks? Julie, you doing all right? Better than the seventh?
I'd really like to do that.
Fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
August fourteenth it is, great. Okay. That's all you have to decide tonight. And one, uh, one other issue is um June twenty-first, a good day to do the s- school board's breakfast. It'd be the last day the teachers are here.
Wednesday? No, no, that's, that big meeting day, I couldn't. We'd be in Manchester for seven o'clock in the morning.
Are, are other board members available on that?
That day?
Twenty-first?
Yeah, yeah, would you do, generally do it around eight? You're all set, Pat? Yeah. It's okay, we, i- if we can get one or two board members, that's terrific. But it's the last day the teachers are here and the, and the board historically has-
I should be here.
Sponsored, sponsored a breakfast for, for folks and we say thank you to not only the entire faculty, but also those folks that are retiring. So June, June twenty-first, you set that up with cafe service? And um graduation will be the night of the sixteenth. Are you available, Michael, Friday night, sixteen?
I think so. I have to check on that.
Any more kids, Patty? You're usually out in the bullpen for us.
Patty maybe, Patty may be doing it.
You said, let me know.
Just to pull her out of the stands.
Yeah.
Come on.
I think three times.
I, I don't have my new schedule on that, but I tend to have late meetings on Fridays now, so.
Okay.
Maybe if that's one of the late meeting days.
You hanging loose, Patty?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other business, any other business coming forward on the board? Privilege of the floor number two. You may just stand.
I've got a couple of questions.
Well, I, just a, a clarification, I'm looking for the uh funding that for the kindergarten teachers, that tied into the point-six funding?
Yes.
No, is that, that just budgetary?
We hired, we hired an extra person for one of the other grades.
I see.
And it was, and it's all, what we do is we fund X amount of positions. And we had some money available and we, we funded another full, full-time position within one through eight. And uh, so it left us with two kindergarten positions with thirty kids. Um, and then we're just holding the point-six music. I, I, I'm afraid the point-six music's been held hostage for the last, this would be the second year, based on, on, on the needs. But when we looked at the budget, the Plymouth Elementary piece of the tax rate is, is at, scheduled to go up a dollar. So it wasn't, it, it wasn't like we could just say, okay, we'll go get another teacher, we're just, it's kind of a jolt. So that's where we are at the moment. If we stay at thirty, if you guys are comfortable with fifteen in August, then we would go, we would go into the marketplace and see if we could find a point-six music teacher.
So, um, I just got, sorry, I just got a couple of questions here. One is, um, just real quick about the summer meeting dates. Um, if there's a change in those, how do people that aren't on the board find out?
We would put it up on the website and then, and also, uh, that, that'd be the place, uh, that would be website.
SAU forty-eight website?
No, it'd be Plymouth Elementary website and, and SAU forty-eight, both places. And the word, and we would get the word out within the building, I think, I think, I think folks follow us.
Um, the other question I had, or one of the other questions I had was, um, just about the um, going back to funding and the enrichment, and um, my understanding is that special ed money is set up from Title I, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I've noticed that a, a large number of special ed uh teachers that are um, that I just noticed that there's more, and I'm wondering if that's going to change? Or is there going to be more of a permanent person of special ed? Or is it going to continue to be uh kind of the one-on-one approach?
I, I just need you to clarify, uh, we have paraprofessionals who, who work, in some cases, one-on-one with some students. That's based on an IEP, an individual education plan, that, that, and then we have case managers, uh, special ed teachers who work with X amount of, of students within the pods, the different pods. And then within the building, we also have two um unique programs um that deal with students that are at, was it K through four and then five through eight?
Right.
So there are two programs. Those are the programs that we sometimes take students in from other districts within SAU forty-eight and, and some outside districts. Um, so that, that's the structure of special education, so.
Okay, sorry, I was, I was a little confused.
Okay, all right. And then the Title I teachers, um, we're Title I, Plymouth's Title I, full Title I school. So all the teachers would be considered Title I teachers.
Um, and then, uh, my last question is, uh, regarding something that I brought up earlier on in the school year, uh, is the idea of, of perhaps expanding Spanish um to include either um, to be more global, uh, to teach global awareness as opposed to focusing on, on, on one language. My understanding is, uh, from what I see from, based on my, what my kids are coming back, they're not really, there's no, it doesn't seem like there's like a hard set structure where they're learning, okay, this is Spanish language, this is, you know, and they're learning verbs and, and the alphabet and sentence structure in Spanish, but rather um, uh, learning about Spanish culture. And I'm wondering if we can either um expand that so that they're learning more about global cultures? Or if there's still um this possibility of teaching incorporated French into the curriculum so that students have a choice between French or Spanish?
Want to take the Spanish piece?
I'd be happy to, um, that's a really great point and you're absolutely right, that's how it's been structured. And Ellen Hand, our teacher, has actually gone out this year and looked at what they call organic world language. OWL, it's the acronym. But it's a, a, it's all about speaking and it's all based on kind of organically having conversations about what is going on so that there is, there is more of an emphasis on conversational Spanish and not cultural. So we are looking at that shift, um, and we are looking at some other options as well for, um, through the use of technology.
Because I know that in grade two, um, Isabel, our daughter, did it last year and um, there's a friend, our dau- our friend's daughter did it this year where the students were given, uh, or did a project where they, um, did a project on specific nations or cultures. And I'm wondering if that can be somehow, or use that as a, as a springboard to further develop this Spanish program, so that's not just Spanish, but more, um, if, if, I, I just feel that geographically where we're at and considering the grade A field trip, their, their, or their, the federal, their cap, if you will, um, happens to be a trip to Montreal where there's so much fundraising, so much effort put into it, that perhaps they should learn some French prior to going up there? As opposed to focusing on Spanish unless they take them down to a more Spanish-speaking dominated city? And so if that's not the case, why don't we just open it up?
Well, the lang- the, the decision on world language being Spanish wasn't based on the field trip. I mean, it, it, the, the field trip is the field trip in and of itself at the end of, of the, of the school. The decision um that was made a number of years ago, doesn't mean it can't be revisited at some point, was that uh, the majority of the world will, that these kids will be dealing with will be speaking Spanish. And that made more sense for us to be teaching Spanish than another language if we were going to have just one language here at the school. The high school has, you know, it, two op- two language opportunities, French and Spanish. And then also, some of our schools, um, I know Rumi uses the Middlebury Language Program and then there's uh other online um span- uh, uh, world language opportunities that kids take advantage of prior to school, uh, and then the Rumi program is during school. But there are um online opportunities for, for kids. That's in terms of just the decision on what language to, to, to. And they, and, and we try in social studies to incorporate um as much world cultural, uh, culture as we can also throughout, throughout our districts.
Um, I'm not sure when that um decision based on world language was made. And I'm, I'm certainly the last person with any kind of expertise in that regard.
Right.
But the way I see trends going, if that's going to be the argument, then we should now shift from Spanish to either um Indian or Chinese.
Right, right.
So.
Again, there's an availability, I mean, we've looked at Mandarin-
That's true.
We've looked at Mandarin at the high school and the, the market for Mandarin teachers is, it's a critical shortage in the state. So I, I would think, and, and it probably won't be in my time, but I would think you'll see Mandarin some, somehow, some way taught at the high school level. I'm not sure that we can get it into, be, just because of critical shortages, we can get that into all the elementary schools, unless we were to use online services, quite frankly.
Would the online services be done, some, would, would the online services be something that's done during class?
It can.
So the classes would, as a whole, learn?
It, it, it can be, um, it can be. It's, that becomes a scheduling issue. Um, and the, and the, the conversation, realistically, the conversation about language choices probably wouldn't be made when we have personnel turnover, to be very honest with you. Um, what, it's a conversation we just recently had at, at the high school. When we have some turnover in world language, you say, you sit and you say, all right, what do we, what do we want to do with our world language opportunity when, when folks either retire or go on to another job? So I suspect, in, in, in good faith, the next time that conversation will really take place is, is when our current teacher decides they're going to retire or, or they take another opportunity someplace. someplace. That's, that's a fair answer to, to be honest with you.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I respect, I understand, it's just really unfortunate to hear that kind of answer.
Unless, unless the taxpayers want to create another position.
Well, I just don't see why that, the, why we're so Spanish-focused. My other big concern with that is that the kids start learning Spanish in kindergarten, the, the Spanish teacher comes in and teaches them. So they're getting eight years of it here and yet my, and this is all anecdotally, so if I'm incorrect, please correct me.
No, go ahead.
My understanding is that when these kids go to high school and start learning Spanish I, they're not excelling. And I took French for nine years, granted, I forgot it all now, but if I took Spanish for eight years, I should have a pretty good grasp in terms of an introductory Spanish course that's offered at the next level at high school. So I'm wondering if the focus can be changed, if the Spanish is going to be continued strictly as Spanish, then there should be more.
Expectation should be higher.
Yes, there should be more taught in certain subjects. My kids are coming home and saying, what are two words that they can just read off of, off of the crayon?
Sure. A number of, historically, a number of Plymouth Elementary kids have gone to the high school and gone right into Spanish II. So there's an opportunity at the high school then to go through what is Spanish V or AP Spanish and get college credit based on that, so. I don't know off the top of my head what the numbers are of the level that, but, but clearly, there've been a number of kids from Plymouth that go right on to Spanish II from here. And there are some that repeat. And again, that can be a family decision, whether to, to go right into two or to repeat
Any more comment? Okay, well, thank you. I entertain a motion to go to non-public session.
Non-public.
Second?
Second.